Yes, thank you.
Welcome to the City of Bellevue Regular Council Meeting for Monday, July 27, 2020. Clerk, do you, are you ready to call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
Here.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Robertson is not here tonight. She has a bit of a family emergency, which we hope turns out well for them all. Next, we have a commendation. Councilmember Lee is going to introduce the commendation and then read it. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm honored on behalf of the City of Bellevue to read the following commendation. Whereas John Lewis helped change the course of U.S. history by advocating equality for all, first as a civil rights leader in the 1960s and later a congressman known as the conscience of the Congress. And whereas Mr. Lewis devoted 63 years to public service and said that he's always been fighting for freedom, equality, basic human rights for most of his life. And whereas Mr. Lewis was beaten, spit upon, and burned by cigarettes as he fought to end Jim Crow laws, challenging segregated restaurants, bathrooms, hotels, public parks, and swimming pools. He was arrested 40 times and jailed on innumerable occasions. And whereas at age of 23, Congressman Lewis was the youngest keynote speaker at the historic March on Washington and modeled the significance of the youth voice in the civil rights movement. And whereas images of troopers cracking Mr. Lewis' skull at a march in Selma for voting rights led to support for the 1965 Voting Rights Act signed into law by President Johnson. And whereas Mr. Lewis was elected to Congress in 1986 from Georgia and continued to fight for freedom, equality, and basic human rights. And in 2016, Mr. Lewis brought his message of civil rights to Bellevue, speaking with students from the city's Youth Link program about his commitment to justice and nonviolence for universal civil rights. And whereas values that Congressman John Lewis forthfought, equality, access, and opportunity for all are at the core of the City of Bellevue's diversity outreach. And whereas weeks before his death from cancer on July 17, Mr. Lewis took part in his last protest in Washington, D.C. in support of systemic change, continuing to inspire what he coined as good trouble.
Now therefore.
And keep your eyes on the right, on the price. This is me.
Now therefore, I, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its City Council, do hereby commend U.S. Representative John Lewis for his courageous efforts to bring recognition to just injustice and his lifelong devotion to the ideals of equity, access, and inclusion, pillars that guide the City of Bellevue. We mourn his loss. Thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda, but we need to make an amendment to the manager's report because we've asked him to include a report on an incident that happened in Somerset involving PSC. And so is there a motion to amend the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. I amended to add one item under the report of the city manager related to the PSC incident in Somerset last Monday.
Certainly.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. City Clerk, do we have written communications to read?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This evening, there are three written communications to read into the record.
Could you go ahead with that when you're ready?
Thank you. The first written communication is from S.W. Thurston of the Bellevue Club. And the time starts now. "We appreciate your, the council's and staff's work on the East Main Lucca. Getting the East Main Lucca done quickly and correctly is in all of our collective interests. The Bellevue Club is very proud to be a member of this community. First, we want to thank staff for its work in the first study session. Staff removed a proposed road that would have bisected the Bellevue Club property, rendering it totally unusable for future expansion of the Bellevue Club. Second, we want to encourage council and staff to consider, to continue to consider the future uses of the properties in East Main as it develops the East Main Lucca. We understand that one of the pending Lucca provisions is a limitation on length of blocks, which has the same effect as placing a road through the Bellevue Club property. We do not support such a limitation and recommend it be removed. Please consider what impact these regulations can have on our future expansion plans. Third, we remain in support of utilizing the downtown OLBS modified to fit the East Main subarea as a method of getting the East Main rezone finally finished. It is not clear to us how DTOLBS is inconsistent with the East Main CPA. If there is a concern that certain aspects of the DTOLBS zoning do not comply with the East Main CPA, then modify the proposed zoning or modify the CPA to achieve the outcomes that we are looking for in East Main. This does not require an overly tortured process. As always, please feel free to contact me with questions you may have related to this matter. Thank you for your good work on behalf of the citizens of Bellevue." The second communication to be read this evening is from David Hoffman of PSC. "Mayor Robinson and council members, I'm writing with an update regarding an incident that occurred on July 20, 2020, in the Somerset area of Bellevue. To clarify, there was not an explosion of any equipment, but vegetation made contact with PSC's lakeside to Talbot Hill transmission line. The protection devices for this line operated correctly and in accordance with the design, thus limiting the amount of fault energy. PSC responded immediately and patrolled the entire length of line and found the contact to be from Ivy that had overtaken a trimmed tree near the conductors. The Ivy acted as a conductor catching the ground on fire, wherein the Bellevue Fire Department responded. Tree trimming was last performed on this section of the line occurring in 2018 in accordance with NESC standards and PSC's three-year cycle time for this voltage of line. As appropriate, PSC has and continues to coordinate with Olympic. Olympic has completed their investigation and did not find any damage to the pipe as a result of the incident. Please reach out with any questions." And the final comment this evening is from Jack McCullough. "Mayor Robinson and council members, we are writing on behalf of WIG Properties to respond to the staff's agenda memo on the East Main Lucca. The agenda memo asks for time to identify which adopted policies may be incompatible with utilizing DTOLBS as the Lucca for East Main. There is no need to take any additional time in this planning process that is already in year six to study potential incompatibilities between the downtown code and the East Main CPA. The downtown code can be used as a starting point for the East Main Lucca and modified to reflect the East Main CPA. This approach will achieve the greatest transparency because it will ensure that any differences between the East Main code and the adjacent downtown code are highlighted and represent council's intentions and direction. City Council could not have been clearer in its guiding principles. Use the regulatory framework of the Downtown Livability Initiative while ensuring that East Main has its own identity. But the first two Lucca topics, street blocks and site organization, have included limited concepts from the downtown code but have incorporated a host of other concepts imported from Bell Red, Eastgate, Evergreen Highlands, and other areas that are nowhere close to East Main. And these other concepts are mostly more restrictive, in some cases significantly so, than the downtown regulations that apply just across Main Street. This puts East Main TOD at a huge disadvantage to compete with adjoining developments on the north. Tonight, we request council provide guidance on the following four concepts from downtown. These concepts are compatible with the East Main CPA and guiding principles. By resolving these items tonight, staff should be able to take significant strides forward on the East Main Lucca and stay on schedule. Number one, use the through-block connection requirements from downtown for the east-west connection between Hilton and Bellevue Club. Number two, use the alleys with addresses guidelines from the downtown to incentivize active uses on any internal streets like they are incentivized on internal streets downtown. Number three, broaden the active use definition from downtown to allow residential uses and service uses, like daycares and medical clinics, for example, on the ground floor. This flexibility is especially critical to assure a lively ground floor in the post-COVID environment where traditional retail will continue to be under pressure just to survive. Number four, for East Main to stay competitive, keep the maximum parking ratios the same as those across Main Street to the north. The adoption of these four key concepts will help bring resolution to the major outstanding questions between staff and the WIGs on the first two topics, which will assure that East Main stays competitive with its neighbors to the north and will use proven and vetted concepts in the new East Main code." It goes on for another couple of sentences. That email is within the council email box and can be viewed in its entirety. And that ends written communications for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. So next, we have the report of the city manager. Mr. Miyake?
Evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. I have one item, as you mentioned, in setting the agenda under the city manager's report this evening. As council might recall, and you heard about this earlier in the oral communication, there was an explosion that occurred in the Somerset neighborhood last Monday evening. We know that this incident has raised concerns for you and the residents of the area and that because of that, I've asked a team of individuals from the Fire Department, Puget Sound Energy, and Olympic Pipeline to speak to the council this evening to explain what happened and what was the response from their respective agencies. Joining us this evening are Bellevue Fire Chief Jay Hagan, David Hoffman of Puget Sound Energy, and Dustin Lambert representing the Olympic Pipeline. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Chief Kagan to begin the report. He?
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, City Manager Miyake, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you this evening on a fire incident we responded to on the 20th of July in the Somerset neighborhood. Next slide, please. This evening's presentation will be brief. I'd also like to give Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Lambert a chance to speak. And it is informational only. Next slide, please. In the presentation this evening, I'd like to cover the sequence of events that happened, the level of threat perceived and real that was encountered by the community, the communication protocol for these types of incidents, and then be ready to address any questions or comments that you may have. Next slide, please. Thank you. This, this incident was investigated by our Bellevue Fire Department investigators and the investigation just recently concluded this, earlier this evening. This incident happened July 20, about 4:26 p.m. in the afternoon and was reported in the 4400 block of 136th Place Southeast. Twenty-eight individual 911 calls were received by our emergency call center, NORCOM, and people were reporting that they heard an explosion. The dispatchers took 1 minute 3 seconds to process the call, so that's take the information from the callers, verify the address, and alert the first responders. The turnout time of the first arriving unit was 78 seconds. That's 2 seconds better than our standard of 80 seconds. And that unit was Engine 108 from the Cougar Mountain Station. The travel time to the incident was 7 minutes 23 seconds for a total response time of 9 minutes 44 seconds. Puget Sound Energy was notified by the responding battalion chief en route from quarters. Next slide, please. Captain McLean from Engine 108 from the Cougar Mountain Station arrived at the scene, established command, and performed a size up. He directed his crew to extend hand lines around the side of the home and connect to a water source. And they flowed water, extinguishing fire on a fence, what turned out to be a communications cable box and a bunch of vegetation. It used about 200 gallons of water to extinguish the fire and 700 gallons were used to thoroughly wet the area around the area that had burned. And just for a matter of comparison, one fire engine holds about 500 gallons of water, so a little more than one tank worth was used. Next, next slide, please. I'd like to point out that, that during this incident, and we will likely hear from Mr. Lambert as well, the Olympic Pipeline petroleum transportation system was not threatened in any way in this incident. I was out there this morning and the, the pipeline is about 3 and 1/2 feet underground and the material that was burning was about 50 lateral feet from where, where the incident happened with the connection to the electricity. Regarding the threat to neighbors, anytime there's a fire burning in proximity to homes or people and vegetation or outbuildings, we're really concerned. And that's why it's important that we get there quickly to deal with it. I'd also like to point out that there was no other threat to any other kind of infrastructure in this incident. Next slide, please. Regarding communications, we use both mandatory and courtesy notifications in our work. For example, mandatory notification would include the spill or release of hazardous materials of a certain size that we have to report, excuse me, report to the state. If we have fuel in a navigable waterway, we're required by law to report that to the Coast Guard. But we also do a lot of courtesy notifications as well, which is just about keeping people informed, even though we don't have a mandate to do that. We do that quite a bit. So while there was no obligation for the Fire Department to contact Olympic Pipeline due to the nature of this incident, a courtesy notification certainly could have been made and given the level of concern in the community, we're going to look to do that in the future. Fire crews receive regular training from the Olympic Pipeline Company and each apparatus carries their emergency operations manual on the rig, which has a when-to-call us section. Those instances are generally related to the visible leak of a product, vandalism to their infrastructure, or any intrusion from digging or construction that might impact the pipeline. Again, just to point out, this particular incident did not warrant our notification of Olympic Pipeline per their current training manual and the training that we received from them. However, there's really good news on the horizon here. Based on an incident in Woodenville last fall, we are coordinating with NORCOM, our dispatch provider, to create a geofencing feature. Now that's a, that's a 25-cent word, geofencing, that basically means we can shade the map to within a couple hundred feet of where that pipeline goes and the dispatchers will be automatically alerted to our operating presence near the pipeline. They'll notify the responders and that makes the notification very, very easy. If we are operating within 100 feet of the pipeline at a fire incident, we will make a courtesy notification to Olympic. And if we're operating within 50 feet, not only will we make the notification, but we will ask a representative from their company to respond to the scene. Next slide, please. Regarding notification, I did speak with several people during that incident while it was going on and we had our PIO send out a message to the neighbors. You can see on the slide, the left shaded portion is where that next-door outward communication went. And we communicated with our, the rest of our city, city media partners on that. So with that, I'd like to invite Mr. David Hoffman from Puget Sound Energy, if he's available, to say a few words about this incident.
Yes, thank you, Chief Hagan. And good evening, Mayor Robinson and members of the council and City Manager Miyake. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share more about this incident. This, this was a unique situation where Bellevue Fire, PSC, and Olympic appropriately responded and coordinated our action. To clarify what started this incident, it was Ivy that made contact with the lines, not a transformer explosion. The protection devices for the transmission line operated correctly and in accordance with the design, thus limiting the amount of fault energy. Basically, the lines tripped off and power was turned off automatically to limit the amount of fault, and fault energy entering the ground. PSC responded immediately and patrolled the entire length of the line and our service person found the source of the contact, Ivy, as I said, that had overtaken a managed tree near the conductors. And that's the lines. Our crews last performed tree trimming on this section, as I mentioned in, in my written comments, in 2018 in accordance with NESC standards and PSC's three-year cycle time for the voltage of this line. Our communication was in accordance with our investigation and the situation. And again, to clarify what Chief Hagan said earlier, this event was not an immediate threat to the pipeline. We continue to coordinate with Olympic and our communication with Olympic confirmed that they have completed their investigation and did not find any damage to the pipeline as a result of the incident. Other than that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Do we have a representative from Olympic to speak as well?
Mayor, this is the city clerk. Can I ask, I don't see Mr. Lambert connected as a participant. He may be calling in. If so, Mr. Lambert, can you use star nine to raise your hand so I can identify you to unmute? Again, Mr. Lambert, if you could use star nine to raise your hand. Mayor, I do not see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and give everybody an opportunity to comment or ask questions. I'm going to go in order of proximity to the incident. So it'll be Councilmember Lee, Zon, Barksdale, Stokes, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and then myself. Councilmember Lee, do you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Colonel Lee. I appreciate Chief Hagan for saying that response was very prompt and Chief Hagan kept me informed. I was one of those that called 911 because the incident happened just a street from me, across the street. And there was this loud explosion. And then there were flames. And then there were smokes, mostly smoke afterwards. And the chief did mention the response time. It's very appropriate, very good. So I think Bellevue Fire Department responded promptly with, with the necessary action. And my question is, in the response procedure and protocol, especially to residents, we don't know what the procedure and protocol is between the parties involved, like PSC and Olympic Pipeline and Fire Department, you know, but to the residents who are there, we must know. And I think due from the email I received and phone calls, it indicated this is a general concern of the people who, you know, who live around there. We don't know what's going on, what's going to happen. What are the determinations of what happened? So it was kind of blank. And, you know, I think a few days afterwards, Chief Hagan did call me and indicated that somebody from either PSC or Olympic Pipeline would be out there looking around. And if I notice any people doing anything, be sure that I know it's, you know, it's appropriate. But nothing, we didn't notice anything. There's nobody who contacted anyone, including, you know, people in the neighborhood, myself. And normally, you know, when you have a paving job, I mean, any work that's done in the neighborhood, we get notices, we get door hangers, we had told what's going to hap, what's happening. But in this case, it's something that very scared me because of unknown. We don't know, we don't know what's, 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 what's happening, right? I mean, we don't know that is not an emergency. It's a situation, like you mentioned, did not warrant notification and this and that. And so, but the residents don't know that. And we are living there for days, now for a week. So that, that's something that I think we need to address. I had the opportunity to contact David Hoffman from PSC and he's very, again, very cooperative. But unfortunately, it's just time in between that I think there needs to be information given to the residents so that they can be assured. Is it safe to, well, obviously, I hope it's safe because there's no notification, but it's assumption. But, you know, are we supposed to do anything or some assurance or what's going on? I think right now, we have a report, which is good, but, you know, it's a week later. And also too, how are we going to get this information out there? Because in the meantime, you're going to hear people who have rumors, innuendos, and all kinds of things that get by, you know, through the, whatever they use. And so this is not assured, assuring to people who, you know, going to know what's going on. So my, my sense is that, you know, when words are used, like appropriate, like doesn't warrant, and communication is in accordance with what? We don't know what it is. Everything may be very safe and sound and cozy, you know, but we have, we don't know what Olympic Pipeline is thinking about, talking about, you know. And again, what we hear is just people, individuals sending out email and saying what they're saying. Who knows what is real, what's not real? So I think it's important that the city take a proactive responsibility to coordinate with the appropriate parties involved and get the information out, get the message out, telling people that we are in charge, we're looking at it, we are coordinated. Things okay, calm down, and we'll let you know. But we heard none of that. So, but thank you for the briefing today, updating. But I believe this, if it's, you know, it's not but too late. I think this should be sent, sent out to the neighborhood. You know, there's a semblance of association, the individuals, people who, you know, I mean, there are all sorts of things that PIO can help to disseminate this information. So this just, I hope that, you know, we will, I appreciate Chief Hagan saying that in the future, you know, we will do something to make sure PIO will notice whatever we have to do, even though it may not be necessarily warrant, it's a courtesy, whatever. But it's the responsibility we have to our residents. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Zon?
Yes, thank you, Chief Hagan. I really appreciate the report as well. You know, fires are a scary thing and I appreciate the fact that we had such a rapid response to extinguish the threat of the fire so that it doesn't spread and create more damage. I am, I also appreciate the thorough review and the after-action that you talked about in terms of here were the steps that were taken and what are some things we can do to improve? Because I do think that, especially in these times of COVID where people are at home, if they're not connected to a electronic channel of communication, how do they know what's going on? So one of the things, I had a couple of questions. One is, other than next door, what are some other ways of communicating, especially during COVID, that we, that we are doing? And when you talk about the geofencing feature coming up for NORCOM, would that be robo-calls and what is the, what is the timing before that feature goes live? And then my third question is, when I think about the expectation of timeliness of communicating back about what's going on, sometimes in an emergency situation, the first information that comes out may not actually be the most accurate information. So those were my three items that I'd like to understand.
Thank you, Councilmembers On. Regarding your first item, I did receive 11 letters from concerned citizens and I'm working on. Thank you, Councilmembers Zahn. Regarding your first item, I did receive 11 letters from concerned citizens, and I'm working on responses to each and every one of them. I have drafts on all of them, and I'll be sending those out in the next, in the next couple of days as soon as I possibly can. Regarding the geofencing, we're coordinating with NORCOM on that, and we expect to be test-driving that program in a matter of weeks. And I'm told that that system will be functional within the two-month timeframe. Again, that's the, that is the added feature where if an incident occurs inside the parameters that we set, which is proximity to the pipeline, something will pop up on the dispatcher's screen, and they'll relay that to the incident commander. And it makes the, it makes the courtesy notifications much easier. And the last part of your question is about, about getting, getting communication out. I think a lesson learned on this one for me is that, you know, fires and explosions is not, is not a big deal to me, but it certainly is if you don't see that all the time. And I think that there are things we can do to get information out more proactively. I know that we have an out-diler capability through our emergency operations center where we can similarly draw a line around a neighborhood and send them a message. I know that we have other communication platforms, so I'm going to be more alert to to using those kinds of tools to maybe put people at ease a little bit more because certainly hearing an explosion like that, seeing a fire close by your home, even though it never really impacted the pipeline in any way, certainly is, is something of concern. And we can, we can be, we can be more proactive about sharing the fact that it's safe and it's okay to, you know, go outside and walk around.
So do we do robo-calls? I know we talked about next door and more of the digital communication, but for those that may not have.
Councilmembers Zahn, in the interest of time, I'm going to have you continue your questions offline with Chief Hagan. Let's go ahead with Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, and David, thanks for the update as well. I guess just echoing the sentiments, you know, I can imagine that it caused quite a bit of concern to hear an explosion if you live near a pipeline and not sure what's happening. So I just want to echo the sentiments, making sure that that communication gets out. And I guess, just really curious about what that collaboration is in the future. I hear you on the geofencing. What's the result of that, though, with the incident command? Is that going to make communication more efficient between PSC and the community, or is it just for dispatch?
Well, thank you for the question. It's certainly going to make things easier for the incident commander to have the information. And we'll have to know. It doesn't do anything for communication to the public whatsoever. We'll have to, we'll have to note the level of interest and concern and be proactive about that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stokes. I don't hear you, Councilmember Stokes. Are you? Are you there?
Yeah, 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 I got it. I started looking down when I started talking, I forget. Yeah, I really appreciate the information and going over this and the steps you've taken to improve this. I do want to commend the department and PSC and Olympic Pipeline for actually being pretty rapid to address this and coordinating. It was a little scary beginning, the assumption that there was no coordination, nobody knew what they were doing. Police Department didn't, I mean, the Fire Department didn't come till later. And those are the kind of things that's hard to get a handle on in a community. But a couple of things I want to say. One is, in terms of communications, it is very difficult. And I think you did a good job in the circumstance. I'm glad you're talking about some improvements. We had an incident a couple of years ago, just a few houses down from me where there was a fire in the house because of a marijuana growing thing, and this is early in the morning, and I don't know how many trucks and everything came up. Well, nobody called and said what this was. And, but it wasn't, you know, you could have all kinds of scenarios and wonder about it. So I guess the balance is, how far do we go in trying to let everybody know anytime there's an incident and what the nature of it is? And so I know it's going to be hard to do, and so I appreciate your efforts. And I think actually, given everything, it wasn't a week or more, it was very quickly that you got things out to people, and you're working to improve that, so that's, that's good. The other is, it's too bad the Olympic Pipeline person isn't here. One of the things that was given out in information was that, and people were saying that, well, it's the same pipeline that blew up in Bellingham. Well, it's not the same pipeline. It's the same line in a sense of where it goes, but it's a different piping, different piping system. And we had Olympic Pipeline come to talk to us early on in this whole process with the PSC project. And they made it very clear that, one, it's not in their best interest to have pipelines blow up. And secondly, they have a completely new system, and they keep up with it, and they're very aware, and they come out quite frequently to work on things. So again, it's just an awareness, but I hope that we can also increase our communication so we don't have misinformation or disinformation going out to the public and then getting people, you know, concerned that, you know, the sky's going to fall. And so I appreciate what you're talking about and the way you're talking about approaching it and doing even more. It's always that balance of how much, you know, how far do you go and how much time and everything it takes and return on that effort. But, you know, great job of working with it and nice to know that it was safe and appreciate very much your report. This was very much needed and very well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Chief Hagan, David Hoffman, thank you so much for coming to the council this evening. Chief, you know, congratulations to you and your team on such an excellent response to this, to this incident. Again, I think it highlights the fact that we've got a world-class fire department, and we should recognize that when you're beating your own timeliness in getting to those incidents. So that's just great to hear. Yes, there's a gap, perhaps, you know, if there's one somewhere lying to this, maybe a gap of communicating to the residents. But it was also an emergency situation, and people were trying to figure out first what had happened before they could communicate that information. But Chief Hagan, I think you make a good point about, you know, fires and explosions are commonplace for you perhaps, or you've seen or been around them. But to those of us that don't deal with those types of incidents very often, they could certainly understand residents being concerned and alarmed. So it's great to hear that we're exploring other possible communication vehicles, be it NORCOM, be it other, you know, I would, I would think digital might be more appropriate here than following up with the letters like you are doing or with other more traditional means. Another possible avenue, Chief Hagan, might be using the My Bellevue app as well to push out a push notification for those in that Somerset neighborhood. This is a suggestion. One quick question for Mr. Hoffman. So Ivy touching a distribution line. We've heard of branches, but not very often with Ivy. When's the last time this has happened, and will PSC look to vary their cadence in terms of how often they trim back trees or Ivy in this, in this location?
Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, so the last time, as I said, the last time that this corridor was trimmed was 2018. And we are reviewing our process, and I can't give a definitive answer that we will be amending or changing our standards as of yet. They are in line with federal standards. And, and the only correction that I would make to your statement is this was a transmission line, not distribution. Quite frankly, it's somewhat more common with distribution lines than our transmission lines. And, and so the Ivy on this tree grew so quickly, and we had trimmed it to our minimum standards in 2018 that it did appear to come into contact with, with the line. So, and if I might say one other thing when it comes to communications, I will say this, that communications in these scenarios can almost always be improved. And with this specific event and, and in the aftermath and the investigation of this event, we had limited visibility into the community's concerns. We had one customer that emailed us about this, this incident, and we responded to that customer. It took a while, quite frankly, to sift through some inaccurate claims and statements that had been made early on in this and figure out where those were coming from and what the truth was. And we have heard that there was also Nextdoor conversations that included some of those inaccuracies. We don't have access to Nextdoor, so that's a social media channel that we can't readily respond to. But we have since reached out to the Somerset Community Association and their, their board leadership with the summary that I had sent to the council, as well as to the Sunset Community Association Secretary to make sure that they, they were fully informed as to what we have done and what actually happened with this event.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, I'll just say to underscore what Councilmember Stokes said. In the absence of correct information, the incorrect information ruled the day, and it was pretty scary. So I think that really shows the importance of getting the information out there right away. And I like the recommendations that you have made for how you could do this differently next time. And I appreciate the good response that you did have. So thank you for that. And thank you for coming tonight to explain. And City Manager, thank you for including that in your report.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Okay, we are on to the consent calendar. And it's a short consent calendar, which includes the final adoption of ordinance 6521. And in the desk packet memo is relating to this item, we point out a clerical consistency error in the published ordinance. So the amended ordinance was part of the council's desk packet this evening. And I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar to include the amended language for ordinance 6521.
I move to approve the consent calendar, which includes the amended version of ordinance 6521 as reflected in the desk packet.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. So now we're on to the first public hearing of more that we'll be having in our process for the budget, the 2021 to 22, and 2021 to 2027 budget. And Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. As you mentioned, this is the first of three public hearings for the upcoming budget. And although state law requires that the council hold a public hearing to gather inputs from residents and other stakeholders, the city of Bellevue goes beyond that and traditionally holds three public hearings, two before the preliminary budget is prepared and one after the preliminary budget is presented. Joining us this evening is Tony Call, the Director of Finance and Asset Management, as well as Kay Liu, the Assistant Director of Finance and Asset Management, and David Baldwin, the Budget Manager. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kay Liu for a brief staff report before you open up the public hearing. Kay?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and the City Manager. As the City Manager said, tonight is the first of three public hearings for the 2021 and 2022 operating budget and the 2021 through 2027 capital investment program plan. As the City Manager begins to prepare his preliminary budget, the city welcomes public input and feedback. Next slide, please. This second slide shows you the major milestones for the budget process. The budget process started a little bit later than usual due to the impact of COVID this year. The initial budget workshop was held on June 22, where council was briefed on the estimated impacts of COVID-19 on the upcoming biannual budget. Staff presented three scenarios to assist in planning for this budget process. The recommended planning scenario continues to assume an 8% or 16 million impact to the general fund with corresponding impacts to the capital investment program and other funds. Tonight is the first public hearing. The second one is scheduled for September 21. The City Manager will present his preliminary budget to you in October, as he said. The final public hearing is scheduled for November, prior to adoption of the budget scheduled for December 2020. And the final public hearing will include preliminary budget-related materials for public review in advance. Next slide, please. In addition to the public hearings, there are other opportunities for the public to engage, as noted on the slide. As a follow-up item from the June 22 budget workshop, the public can now go to City's main page and find the budget public engagement site under hot topics. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you very much. I know we've received a number of written comments regarding the budget, and we've forwarded those to the City Manager, and they will be considered during the budget process. But tonight, we're going to receive public testimony. So is there a motion to open the public hearing? Deputy Mayor, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I moved to open the public hearing.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
I was muted just now. Okay, so now I'm okay. So was I.
Okay, City Clerk, could you go ahead and tell me if we have any public testimony? And if so, could you have that, start that process?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Before we start calling, okay, before we start calling names, I'd like to say that the public hearing notice for this public hearing this evening was published on both July 13th and July 20th. It instructed parties on the methods of providing comment. So in your desk packet this evening are the comments received to the City Clerk and the Budget Manager. In addition, there are a number of comments that have been sent directly to council via email for consideration. Those are in the council's inbox for review and have been provided to the Budget Office. So for the public hearing this evening, there are a total of 11 speakers signed up. For those of you signed up, I will call your name and unmute you in order of sign up. Once I've established that we can hear you, you will have three minutes to make your statement. Please wrap your comments up when you see the timer reaches zero. And at this point, I would like to call first speaker, which is Lucas Peterson. Mr. Peterson, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Great. Your time begins now.
Thank you. My name is Lucas Peterson. I live in southwest Bellevue. The purpose of this public testimony is to promote and support the demands made by a local community organization, East Side for Black Lives. The demand is to remove school resource officers from the Bellevue School District. In the 2019-2020 Bellevue City Budget, the Police Department made a budget proposal, number 120.20PA, under the Safe Community Budget category. This proposal funded six school resource officers. If this same proposal is made in the upcoming budget process, it should be rejected. None of the key community indicators nor the key performance indicators used by the results team consider the views of the people most affected by SROs. SROs do not create safe schools, and they perpetuate the school-to-prison pipeline here in Bellevue. These demands relate directly to the City Council statement released on June 11. Council members, you all committed to the work of equity or some type of work to address racism in Bellevue. If you're going to invoke that concept of equity, you must pass a budget that defunds the Police Department, a budget that supports replacing current zoning policies with zoning policies that support robust, affordable housing, and a budget that quits protecting corporate interests that push people out of Bellevue. And finally, a budget that reduces harm for black and brown students in our school district. Please quit using the budget process to manufacture support for police budget proposals by drawing from flawed public opinion surveys that do not disaggregate data about police performance by race. Please start valuing the stories and data provided by our community. Please start valuing the stories and data provided by our community members, especially those in Eastside for Black Lives, about the harm of school resource officers in our schools. They do not want better school resource officers. They want no school resource officers, and they want counselors, social workers, and accountability for racist ideas in their schools. I yield the rest of my time. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Rachel Krensky. Ms. Krensky, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Robinson and City Council members. Thank you so much for your time and for everything that you have been doing for the residents of Bellevue and your neighbors as we face the unprecedented challenges of COVID-19. I am the Executive Director of LifeWire in Bellevue, but I'm also the co-chair of the King County Alliance for Human Services, and I'm speaking tonight wearing that hat on behalf of the Eastside members of the King County Alliance for Human Services. We sent you all a letter in March asking you to increase human services funding in the 2021-22 General Fund to 2% of the human service, of the general fund. That was before COVID. And since then, we recognize the impacts and have been following the discussions about the impacts of COVID on the city budget. And so we sent you another letter in May asking that you at least maintain the current level of human services funding. I would like to just recognize the statement of the speaker before me and recognize that I think there are some conversations going on about reallocating funding towards human services. But in any case, I'm here tonight to just talk about the increasing needs for human services funding during this time. I recognize, we all recognize on the Eastside advocacy team that Bellevue has really gone the extra mile to provide extra funds through general revenue and through CDBG to help residents with emergency needs during COVID, and we are deeply appreciative of that. Our region has never seen such a quick onset of challenges, and those are impacting people of color and other marginalized people the most. So it has been incredible to experience the community coming together to care for each other in this way. During this time of uncertainty, you have a critical role to play in building and supporting community well-being. So we are not here, I am not here representing this group to talk about specific needs or specific nonprofits, but to say that many individuals and families in the Eastside and in Bellevue are facing unemployment and health challenges and food insecurity and housing insecurity. And the most direct way that you can foster well-being is through planning and development of the city budget policy. So we ask again that you at least maintain the current level of human services funding, and if at all possible, increase the level of human services funding to support community members through this period of crisis and beyond. And we ask that you develop budget blueprints for 2021 and beyond that build over time to increase support for human services so that Bellevue can be a place where all of its residents can thrive. Thank you so much for your service and for your consideration of our recommendations.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christopher Randalls. Mr. Randalls, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Excellent. Hello, council members. My name is Christopher Randalls, 15421 Southeast 4th Place. I want to first of all, thank you for the public nature of these discussions and for giving us all the opportunity to provide feedback. I appreciate that direct community input is still being facilitated even in these weird COVID times we find ourselves in. So first of all, off the bat, I definitely support continued funding in concrete climate change action, including renewable energy investments, new greener building codes, and non-motorized transportation facilities. On this last one in particular, I personally request that all CIP projects involving non-motorized facilities be given the utmost priority in budgeting. Just because we are in a budget crisis doesn't mean that we can renege on our obligations for mitigating the climate crisis. The health of our residents and environment is dependent upon continued meaningful and budgeted action. Also, I want to recognize the unique moment in history we find ourselves in, not just because of COVID, but because of the essential discussions going on nationwide about how citizens want their public safety departments to function. I think that it's important that Bellevue not be left out of that conversation. I personally am a young, white, cis-het passing male, so I have the privilege of my interactions with Bellevue PD up to this point having been positive and professional. But it's important to note that systemic racism exists, and we know from data that these positive experiences with law enforcement are frequently not shared by people of color. In December 2018, Officer William Dowling placed a woman pulled over for a minor traffic violation into a chokehold and threatened to knock her unconscious. It was only after continued public outcry through traditional and social media that the department announced that it would ban chokeholds, but the issues don't stop there. The victims later clear request to file a complaint was negligently misinterpreted as a public records request, and the initial press release from BPD explained how the officer's conduct was within department protocol without the self-awareness that this is precisely the problem. Now, minor traffic stops disproportionately conducted against minority citizens can even escalate to deadly situations and use as a force is precisely the motivation behind defunding the police. It's not about just cutting police budgets and doing nothing with that money, though. It's about investing that money in new services that can take care of traffic enforcement, domestic disturbances, mental health crises, the situations where the best solution maybe isn't a person with military-style training showing up with a gun. Because the profession as is unfortunately does not always attract people who are fit to serve this city. In the last two months alone, two officers out of Bellevue's approximately 180 commissioned officers have been put on administrative leave, one for domestic violence charges, one for racist, dehumanizing social media posts involving absolutely nonsense conspiracy theories like QAnon. I work in a company of 500-plus people, so I can speak from experience when I say that we don't have this type of culture problem, and I've never had to fire people for a report in contact like this. I therefore ask the council to listen to the minority youth voices of Bellevue and defund the police by 25% at minimum and provide honest, meaningful engagement opportunities to allow all members of our community to reimagine what that money can be used for, to have public safety in Bellevue serve all of Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randalls. The next speaker is Mahadi Majapudi. Mr. Majapudi, can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Good evening, council members. I'm incredibly thankful for this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Mahati Majapudi. I'm 17 years old, and I'm a rising senior at Innerlake High School. My address is 1204 150th Avenue, Northeast Bellevue, Washington, 98007. I love our planet. Since the first time I went rock hunting in my backyard as an elementary schooler to when I started studying the earth sciences more seriously in middle school, I've always been drawn towards the earth. Two summers ago, I had the incredible opportunity to participate in the International Earth Science Olympiad held in Thailand as part of Team USA. There, I learned about the very real and current consequences of climate change people are facing abroad, such as heat waves in Spain and flooding in Bangladesh. Returning home and learning that climate change has already started impacting our own communities, for example, with drought and wildfires, I was inspired to take action for the climate. Since then, I've helped lead efforts on developing the Sustainability Ambassador's Climate Action Plan to spearhead sustainable action in local communities, and I've started an initiative to elevate the youth voice in the climate active, climate action conversation. I would first like to thank you all for your hard work and commitment to our city. I know the pandemic has presented many challenges and obstacles. I really appreciate the work the city has been doing this year to update the Environment Stewardship Plan and ensure it reflects the desires of our city's people. Thank you for the opportunity today to speak about the budget. Though the climate crisis will permeate all aspects of society, our economy and health are especially at risk. The dry spell in the summer of 2015, which is considered to foreshadow the consequences of a climate crisis in our community marked economic collapse and increased rates of health-related issues. Our frontline and marginalized communities were the first to be affected and will continue to suffer the brunt of climate change consequences. It is imperative that we prioritize our climate-oriented goals in the budget and lead on creating new green jobs that support community equity. Collectively, such changes can help clean our air and our environment, contributing to better health in our community, especially with regards to the COVID-19 pandemic. Especially during the hardships of the pandemic, it is critical that we collaborate with other local cities to build our community and strengthen our climate action on all fronts. Learning from and with each other will help us implement technologies, solutions, and programs that will help us elevate each other while elevating the environment. Imagine a healthier, greener community in which people of all backgrounds have better opportunities and a better future. I'm counting on you to make sure this budget reflects the crucial importance of climate action planning for our city to help us reach this vision. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer Keller. Ms. Keller, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Keller. My nickname is Jan. And I live in Lake Hills at 115 146th Avenue Southeast, Bellevue 98007. And I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. And I want to thank the council for all their hard work and the staff for all their hard work during the pandemic and during this time of asking important questions about social justice. I also want to acknowledge that this is a tough time to be working on a budget. I mean, who really knows what things will be like in six months or a year? But here it is, budget time, and so it's time to reflect on our priorities. So I want to talk about climate action planning. I'm part of People for Climate Action, or PCA, Bellevue, although I am speaking for myself today. I'm here because I love how green this place is and because I'm concerned about our young people and their future in a changing climate. I know that work's been going on to update our environmental stewardship plan, and I really appreciate that. I want to thank you for your support and your ongoing support for making our plan just as strong as it can be. Improving that plan and gathering every other climate action planning resource we can is especially important now because the time will come when we are building back our economy. The city must be ready at that moment to help us build back cleaner and reduce our carbon footprint. Building back cleaner can bring some benefits that have been thrown into high relief in this time: jobs and health. Jobs can benefit from building back cleaner. There's an outstanding recent report that backs up that statement. It lays it out in more detail for Washington State specifically, food for thought. It's at the state level, but still. And I'll put a link to the report in the chat and send the link in an email as well. Building back cleaner can also help with community health by keeping our air cleaner, which helps reduce the impact of COVID-19 and other respiratory illnesses. So please keep this in mind for the budget. You know, during this time, I've been looking around for good news to read and good webinars to attend, and I've been finding some really great stuff about how we can build back cleaner and with greater equity. For example, there's work being done by C4 Cities, a group of large cities all working to take strong climate action. They created the C40 Mayor's Statement of Principles. Maybe you've heard of it, I don't know. And they're building on it. The statement emphasizes both the benefits and the importance of creating a recovery that is sustainable and equitable. I'll provide a link to that, too. So as you work on the budget, please make sure it reflects the crucial importance of climate action planning with equity integrated into it for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Warren Halverson. Mr. Halverson, I don't see your name on the list. If you are connected with a telephone, can you please use star nine to raise your hand? Thank you. Mr. Halverson, can you hear me now?
I certainly can. Thank you.
Excellent. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council members and the City Manager. These are tough times for all of us, times that have not been seen by any of us. My wife and I want to express our thoughts about the upcoming budget discussions. Having had many years of experience and responsibility for managing budgets in a large corporation, I would simply share this. Authorities generally say, and I agree, most budgets have a 15% given them without materially impacting future results, 15%. A lot of budgets have aspirational aspects. While travel is a very flexible expense, the most significant expense is headcount. Normally, major savings can be made immediately by combining functions or reassignment, freezing hiring, furloughs, and/or incentivizing retirement. The first three options are very effective and easy to implement, but certainly not painless. As to priorities, we have lived in Bellevue for over 40 years. Thankfully, we have only had a couple of occasions to ask for fire or police assistance, but when we did, we were delighted with their response to us. We totally support complete, complete funding for the Fire and Police Department. In today's environments, these functions are more important than ever. We encourage you to ensure the future safety and security of your citizens in the city. Both of these departments are headed by extraordinary men. We are fortunate to have such capable and professional individuals, Chief Mallett and Chief Hagan, in these key positions. Safety should be your number one priority. We know, I know, fiscal restraint requiring budget trade-offs is not easy. We too know that the council and the city staff do not take this responsibility lightly and will make the right decision. Thank you for your consideration. Let me just add, though, regarding the situation that occurred on Somerset, because I live in bridal trails along that same pipeline. A petroleum explosion or fire cannot be put out by water. It requires foam. We all need to be really safety-conscious about these particular incidents. I appreciate the report that was given tonight. Disappointed that BP was not there. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Halverson. The next speaker is April Stevens. Ms. Stevens, can you hear me? Ms. Stevens, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is April Stevens, and I live at 369 101st Avenue Southeast, Bellevue, Washington, 98004. First, I want to thank you all for the work you've done and are doing to help make our city a leader when it comes to its beauty and livability, especially right now when we are faced with challenges like never before. These challenges range from the systemic political divisions to the serious health crisis of COVID-19 that is affecting every aspect of our community. And while both of these things require your attention, and I do appreciate the efforts you have put into addressing these issues, I am here to address an even larger overriding concern, which is our warming climate. Scientists had warned us about a respiratory virus exactly like COVID-19 years ago. Epidemiologists who study this sort of thing saw this coming. And if we pay attention to the scientists now, the data is telling us that we risk a warming climate with a host of disasters, and that now is the time to do something about it. The good news is that the current crisis has taught us a lot about following the data and that it's important we get our priorities straight. We can apply the same lesson to climate change. By following the data and budgeting for climate priorities, we can build back our cities with cleaner buildings and transportation and with greater equity. We know that being proactive with climate action, we can actually help accelerate our economic growth. According to the Low Carbon Prosperity Institute, low carbon prosperity means lower traffic congestion and higher productivity, less spend on energy, more money in consumer pockets, higher incomes, cleaner environments, a thriving clean tech sector with global reach, reliable and affordable low-carbon electricity, and overall lower cost of doing business. Clearly, these are benefits that we want for our residents, our workers, students, businesses, and visitors, and will help to keep our city beautiful and livable. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. And please make sure that our budget reflects the crucial importance of climate action planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matthew Katchuk. I am so sorry if I mispronounced that, but Mr. Katchuk, can you hear me? Mr. Katchuk, there should be a prompt to unmute.
All right, I see that now.
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Katchuk. I work in Bellevue. I live right on the edge of Redmond and Bellevue. So what happens in the city is very important to me. I came here to echo the sentiment presented by Chris Randall. So I think he gave some excellent points. And I also wanted to thank the people who have taken time out of their day to speak here today, especially the younger people I've been hearing. It's really encouraging to hear you guys come forward. Thank you for your time. I yield the rest of mine.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cynthia Cole. Ms. Cole, can you hear me? Ms. Cole, there should be an unmute prompt.
Right there, you're.
There we go. Thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay. Thank you, Bellevue City Council members, for allowing.
Okay. Thank you, Bellevue City Council members, for allowing public testimony on the budget. And I realize this current budget discussions, they're just starting. And I understand there will be cuts, yet I believe that our police and fire departments are too important to the safety and livability of Bellevue and should be held harmless with no cuts. Based on what we all witnessed happen in downtown Bellevue at the end of May, I think the city of Bellevue should increase funding to the police department to add more positions. We could also add to the budget provisions for body cams and additional training. Our Bellevue Police Department is stretched thin, and they have a hard time keeping up with small property crimes, which I have seen personally. I would like to see them be able to spend less time serving as social workers and focus more of their time on fighting crime and maintaining public safety. Therefore, increasing social services funding to hire more specialists to serve the part of our population experiencing homelessness, behavioral health issues, drug addiction, drug addiction, and other challenges would also free up our officers to do what they do best. The police and fire departments also work together in difficult situations. Our firefighters and paramedics count on the police to secure the scene so they can safely work on saving lives. We need both of these dedicated professionals. Part of what makes Bellevue a great place to live is that our city leaders have always placed an emphasis on public safety. Well-funded police and fire departments are an essential part of maintaining our public safety. So I would ask that you keep this in mind when you're doing your budget process this year, and thank you for allowing me my three minutes.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ruth Lipscomb. Ms. Lipscomb, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Your time begins now.
Okay, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Ruth Lipscomb, and I've been a resident of the Newport Shores neighborhood of Bellevue for over twenty-five years. I'm concerned with the militarization of the police departments all over the country and especially in the city that I call home. I feel that our city cannot be truly welcoming and inclusive community while our police department is seen as adversaries by a subset of our residents. After learning that Bellevue Police's armored vehicle and SWAT personnel were deployed to Seattle this weekend, I also began to hear rumors that foam bullets used by the department had been provided by the Bellevue Police Foundation. I attempted to verify that rumor by going to a credible source, the Bellevue Police Foundation website. I found that all information related to grants had been stripped from the foundation's website. Also, their list of board members and donors had disappeared. As you may know, nothing is ever truly gone for the internet, so I was easily able to see the deleted pages and confirmed that in two thousand and sixteen, a grant was made to purchase crowd control equipment, including foam bullet launchers. From the other information I read on those deleted pages, the police department sends a wish list to the police foundation, and the foundation funds the requests. I would like to know how the city vets that list of requests? And is there a process or a system to ensure that the equipment requested and any training provided by outside funders is in alignment with the city's values? In conclusion, I would ask you to add much-needed transparency to the police department's budgets, including any resources provided by outside groups. Please dial back the militarization of the police department. And when you set the budget for the next year, I encourage you to move funds from that department to areas of the budget that more equitably support the well-being of our fellow citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ruth Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you so much. I would like to begin by seconding the speaker Cynthia Cole's points that she made. I think it is very true that without a strong law enforcement, you don't really have much of a city for people to want to come to for many reasons. I'd like to also thank you, the council, for letting me address you and having this opportunity. And also to thank all of the lawful law enforcement, which I believe is the great majority of them. Just like we've all had probably one bad teacher in our schooling, most of them are good. And I think to throw the baby out with the bathwater and say that all teachers are bad based on one or a small percentage of the police is very, very unfair. I'm not suggesting that there aren't some changes that we could make. I think, number one, to outlaw chokeholds would be a really good start. But this idea of no police or defunding, you know, the police department, I think, is just absolutely ludicrous. We hopefully will learn a lot from the lessons that we've all seen over the last weekend and other times in Seattle and realize that lawlessness really does not work. The whole example of CHOP, for one, which was based out of or built out of wanting to bring and highlight the BLM movement. And the end result in their lawless little society they set up there was that two young black men are now dead. Had we'd had the proper police, that they've been able to do their job the way they should have been, those two young men would still be alive today. So I think that kind of proves the point better than anything I can really say otherwise. I love this community. I've lived here a long time, and I do, you know, feel that the police are invaluable part of it and why it's such an attractive place to so many people. Further, I do think that there are other community outreach groups that and facilities and jobs that the police contribute in ways that some may not be aware. I know for a fact that they do reach out, for example, to some of the skateboarders in the local parks around the area, and these are kids that many times are at loose ends. And without that connection and that kind of role model, I don't know where they'd be. So there are just a number of reasons that I feel is very important, particularly at this juncture, for us to throw all of our support behind the police and certainly not to defund or even reduce the the funding for the police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that ends the list of speakers pre-registered to speak this evening. At this time, I would like to ask if there are any members connected to the phone call currently that would like to provide comment. If you're connected with a computer, please use the raise hand function. If you're connected with a telephone, please use star nine to raise your hand. Mayor, I don't see any additional raised hands to speak tonight, so that is the end of public comment.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry, mayor. Can you pause, please, while I unmute council members?
Yeah.
Close the public hearing. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. So we've heard from the public, and I'm sure everybody, I speak for everybody when I say how nice it is to hear from the public. Been a kind of lonely here on our own, and it's just great to hear the voice of the public and all their thoughts and recommendations. We, this is not really a discussion item, so we don't need to discuss or take any action. So I'm going to say that all the comments are going to be noted by the city manager and us as as he prepares his budget recommendations, and we will consider the comments made tonight. And then there will be, I think, two more opportunities for the public to weigh in on the budget process. So the next item is a study session item. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This is a land use code amendment for the East Main Station area. This is the second study session for council to consider the East Main Land Use Code amendment. It appears that the council may be interested in revisiting certain policies in order to extend the downtown OLB South provisions to East Main. Miss Satch, instead of presenting topic area two, which was side organization as planned, staff is seeking confirmation of the council's interest to undertake this policy review. So joining us this evening is Mike Brennan, the Director of Development Services, along with his staff, Trisna Tanis, Consulting Attorney, and Nick Whipple, the Senior Planner, as well as Matt Cummins, the Director of Committee Development, and Emile King, Assistant Director of Committee Development. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mac to kick this conversation off. So, Matt.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake, Mayor, and members of the council. Good to be with you this evening, even in Zoom format. We're here tonight to talk with you all about what we understand the council's interest potentially being in looking at using the downtown OLB South land use code in some or in whole in the East Main Planning Initiative area. And this has been an idea that has been discussed a couple of times, and you've received a series of correspondence relating to this idea. And the study session this evening will be a discussion with the city council to see if the council as a whole is interested in pivoting from the current work program, which is to build a land use code and instead pivot to use the downtown OLB code. And as we walk through this tonight, we're going to have a very brief presentation and really pose that question and that question only. And if the council is interested in using the downtown OLB zoning, we would come back at a different study session, most likely in September, to walk the council through the policies that are in the city's comprehensive plan relating to the East Main area and any other applicable policies and the downtown zoning, which are foundationally different. And they are foundationally different in the sense that development and growth in the downtown is very different than growth that occurs outside of the downtown. And as the council adopted policies for East Main that implemented your vision for the area, those policies then are looking to move forward into the creation of a land use code. And so as if the council would like to look at using the OLB sections or the downtown zoning itself, staff would provide you with the policies in the comp plan that are in conflict with the downtown zoning. Charmaine, can we go to the next slide? So tonight, if it's the council's will to pivot that work program, what we would do then is bring back the study session, as I mentioned. And I think the other opportunity for the council at that time would be to affirm your vision for the East Main area and give the staff clear direction on those policy items that are in conflict with the ideology that are in the downtown OLB zoning. And in that way, that would hopefully help expedite the creation of a new land use code for the East Main area. So we only have a few more slides. I'm going to hand it off. Can we go to the next one? I will give it off to Ms. Tanis, who's going to walk through tonight and talk a little bit about how we got here and what we've heard. And then I'll walk back through the direction for tonight if council would like to go in that in that route.
Thank you, Mr. Cummins. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members. While Mr. Cummins and I are presenting this short presentation, I do want to point out that our larger team, as Mr. Miyake pointed out, are available to answer questions that you may have after the presentation. So for our agenda tonight, we'll first describe how we have been engaging with the public and stakeholders for the East Main planning project. We will summarize for you what we have heard and return to the direction that we need from council. Next slide, please. For public engagement, we have a three-pronged approach. As this is LUCA, it is a process for decision. We will provide noticing and prior to adoption, there will be need, there will need to be a public hearing. We also have engaged in direct conversations with stakeholders, as you heard from us describe that at our study session one. Since re-engaging with stakeholders a month ago or so, we have had many discussions with them where we provide information as to our process and what our intended recommendations are, as well as answer questions that they may have. We believe that we have incorporated their requests and feedback as much as we can and within the confines of the adopted policies and principles. We certainly have appreciated their time and engagement with us. And lastly, as part of our public engagement plan, we have an online presence for East Main where we provide regular updates and have an inbox for people to submit comments. Next slide, please. From our interactions with council and briefings and the first study session, we understand that council may be interested in extending and using the downtown OLB South provisions for East Main. We have also heard repeatedly from stakeholders to utilize downtown provisions, specifically downtown OLB South in the East Main LUCA. As Mr. Cummins pointed out at the outset, there are fundamental differences from the policies that are embedded within downtown and downtown OLB South to the policies for East Main. So if the desire is to extend and utilize downtown and OLB South for the East Main LUCA, there will be conflicts and disalignment between the adopted policies and this LUCA. So in order to shift and focus staff's work to properly respond to council's interest, we believe a policy review is needed to accomplish better alignment and clarity between the adopted policies and the LUCA. So again, downtown OLB South may be applied to East Main potentially. Our goal is ultimately to develop a LUCA that meets council's vision for East Main. Also, we fully understand from council and the stakeholders that time is of the essence. Staff will be bringing back in September more detailed policy analysis if council directs us to, which will then inform the remaining LUCA work, again, with the goal of getting to an outcome that council is looking for. So to close, I'd like to turn it back to Mr. Cummins.
Matt, you may go.
There we go. Sorry, we had a little mute issue on Zoom. Yeah, can we go to the next slide, Charmaine? So the direction from council tonight, should you want us to look into those policies that would be in conflict with using the downtown zoning outside of downtown, we'd be ready to bring that back to you right after Labor Day in one of the early September study sessions. We could work with the clerk's office. And should the council want to change any of those policies, that would be a just need to initiate a change to the city's comprehensive plan, which is a CPA process that I know the council is very familiar with. And then we would just put that into the work plan throughout the rest of the year and then start working on the the LUCA as well. So at that point, I think we'll stop. If there are questions for us, we're happy to take them and any feedback from the council.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to go ahead and go in this order. Councilmember Barxdale first, then councilmember Stokes, Deputy Mayor Newen House, councilmember Zon, Lee, and then I me. So councilmember Barxdale, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So I'm familiar with this from planning commission time and the last meeting. And I looked over the policies over the weekend to downtown policy, the southwest policy, as well as the concepts and the East Main TOD vision. And there seems to be quite a bit of similarity between the downtown OLB and the East Main TOD, which is also OLB if I'm not mistaken, just outside, currently is just outside of downtown. So my recommendation is that we use or extend the downtown OLB South and tailor it so it's consistent with the vision for the East Main TOD. And I looked at the the four concepts and also the relevant comprehensive plan policies and headers for those sections, and they seem consistent with the East Main TOD. And so I would recommend that we move forward with those four policies and bring back, if the staff could bring back land use code in September and any policies that were where they couldn't get passed because they need to be changed. So we can move this along.
Do you want to specify which the four policy changes you are talking about?
Yeah, so the through block connection, the alleys with addresses, the active uses being broadened to include services and residential uses beyond the list currently there, and then the reducing the parking minimum ratio. And so yeah, I looked across the downtown policy, looked across the southwest policy goal, and I mean, there's, it did seem consistent.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I'm really excited to be at this point, and I really appreciate staff's taking a look at this, coming back and and proposing a way to address these issues. And we're all trying to get to what's best for this area. How do we develop it? I think we all want transit order and development, particularly in this north end of it, the other pieces that's down the line. So I'm excited about actually having a focus on this. So I'm excited about actually having a focus on this. I'm not sure what all the differences are. I think we'll go through that. And I'm excited to see what we can take from the downtown piece. And actually, basically everything that Councilmember Barksdale mentioned or said, I agree with. I think it's, we're at that point where we've had a lot of discussion. I think we know what we want to get, and I think staff has worked very hard on this. And I do like the consideration of the four different. They're new, but they're not really new because we've had kind of conversations around these for some time. But adding these four concepts to the discussion and coming back with us. And I'm looking forward to some, hopefully some briefings before we come back in September. So we kind of know where we're going on this. But again, just good work all the way around, and I'm excited to see this hopefully coming to a final conclusion, and let's get going on it. So thanks very much. Thanks, staff.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I continue to state how much I appreciate staff's hard work on the East Main area to date. I think it's important to recognize Mr. Cummins, Mr. Brennan, Mr. King, Ms. Tanis, and Mr. Whipple, and the rest of the greater team that's been working on this. So it's been a long haul so far, but we're getting close. And after tonight, my hope is that we're getting even closer. Great to see that Councilmember Barksdale's time on the planning commission coming to such great use tonight, as well as Councilmember Stokes' experience just on the council in general. But yeah, I'll just echo what Councilmember Barksdale said about my desire here. And I believe that so far that my colleagues agree that we should direct staff to draft this land use code, using the downtown OLB South code as the starting place, and then tailor it to be consistent with the East Main comp plan while incorporating those four points. Happy to repeat those again, but I think that would be redundant. But those are found in the recent letters from those stakeholders. And then I look forward to staff bringing this back to council as a draft in September. So again, thank you for all the great work and look forward to seeing the draft.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, so I also appreciate staff's hard work in really trying to find a path forward for us with some urgency, because this is something that we've been working on for quite some time of developing our guiding principles. And I appreciate the previous comments made about some focused areas to work on in terms of policies. You know, what I keep thinking about is that we were very intentional in developing our guiding principles for this East Main TOD area. So to the degree that we can get a clarity of vision about what we intend for this area and how it fits into, written into the land use code, I think is very important. You know, to me, we talked about a thriving urban neighborhood TOD. And to the degree that we better understand what unique characteristics this area brings that differentiates it from downtown while using the OLB, then that makes sense to me. I just want to make sure that we don't lose the hard work that we have spent several years developing as we go through this final push to get to the land use code. So I look forward to seeing what comes in September. And I agree that I think it would be important for us to at least get some perhaps individual touch points so that when it shows up in September, we already better understand where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zahn. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Barksdale. I think was very clear at the last meeting that what the council wished to see. And so rather than repeating, I think we hear very clearly. And so also, I heard how the staff mentioned that using downtown OLB downtown code as a baseline, there may be something that may be in conflict with the council's policy. And I'm not sure what that is. But if there is one, I think the staff can actually probably, you know, I trust the staff, you know, they are very capable, they're very, the best we've got or anybody has. And they can tune it in such a way that it will be possible to be consistent with the policy. If the policy isn't, then I think we need to know what it is, and we can clarify that. And we can make the adjustment in the policy because we don't really know specifically until the staff tells us what it is. But I think that's what we stand for now, the council. I think we articulated very clearly this time. And so I support that, and I completely agree with Councilmember Barksdale and Deputy Mayor, making sure that we, and the others, obviously. We want to move ahead. And if there's any inconsistency in policies, we like to know what it is. I'm sure the staff can give it to us very easily and quickly because they obviously already have some idea. And so we don't even need to wait until September. The question is what they are, and we can make the corrections. We can make the necessary adjustments, and then we can get moving forward. But the principle that we decided is what we articulated at the last meeting and just being articulated again by Councilmember Barksdale. So I support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. So I'm going to take a turn here, and I'm going to add something to the conversation. And then I'm going to go back through and let the council say whether they agree or not with what I'm going to ask for. Because I want to give a real clear direction to staff tonight and in hopes that we can have a less laborious procedure and move efficiently through this. So I agree with my colleagues on the four points that they've brought forward. But there are two things that I believe are in the East Main comp plan that are not in the OLB that I would like to include. And that is having that ped bike connectivity. And whether it goes down 112th or through private property, I don't know. But that there needs to be a ped bike connectivity through that part, that East Main area. And also the affordable housing component. There should be an affordable housing component that you can get increased density or increase height as an incentive in return for affordable housing. And I know there's a pretty good one in the East Main comp plan that I would like to make sure is applied to this. So those two things are important to me. Otherwise, I completely agree with what's been proposed. So I'm going to go back through in the same order and ask for a head nod or a comment, whatever. So Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes, I support that. No further comments.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I thought they were in there, and I think it's great to actually point those out. So I agree.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I fully agree. And in fact, along those lines, just want to reiterate point number four as well about reducing East Main's minimum parking ratios due to its proximity to light rail and how that intersects with affordable housing and allow the same maximum parking ratios as downtown. So but yes, fully in support of your comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
I agree as well.
Councilmember Lee.
I support it. I think it makes a lot of sense. It's for good development. I think the developers, the stakeholders could not probably refuse it. The only comment I would like to make is I think affordable housing makes sense, and especially when we have affordable housing incentive policies, that's a good thing. And for ped bike connectivity, I think that's excellent also. And the only question I have is, I don't think we need to be too, what do you call? What's the word? Prescriptive.
Prescriptive.
I think, yeah, I think, you know, it's important for them to be able to do it in such a way that doesn't disrupt and doesn't make it difficult for their development. But I think the concept, the connectivity, absolutely. But with the caveat that it would not be prescriptive, prescriptive. So I support. Thank you.
Councilmember Barksdale, you had one more comment.
Yeah, I just want to make one more comment about the process and just sort of want to encourage staff to also take a look at how we can make changes to the process that future decisions, we have Wilberton coming up, for example, and just want to mitigate this sort of, you know, similar six-year process and complexity and the guiding principles and so forth. So just want to encourage them to also do a sort of a retrospective and find ways to optimize this process.
Yeah, this is a, this is a unique situation because there could have been a development agreement that specifically kind of spot zoned this property. There could have been, based on the East Main comp plan, we make changes, or based on the OLB comp plan, we make changes. So there's so many ways to go about this. I agree with Councilmember Barksdale. It'd be nice to find a streamlined way to make the kind of positive change we want to make. So if we could go back to slide number two, or I think it was slide number five as well, and look at the direction that we wanted to give. Bear with us for just a minute as we pull up that slide. There we go. Okay, I think everybody can see that. Thank you, Charmaine. So the direction to staff would be what is written here and to include a ped bike connectivity and affordable housing with incentives. Similar to what's already in the East Main comp plan. So we don't need to vote on this.
If I could, I would just include that those four key concepts are also included in that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Exactly right. So let's, I'm going to, does somebody else want to say something?
Just one clarifying question. Also talked about having a draft Luca come back in September along with those barriers in terms of comprehensive plan policies.
Yeah. And sooner than September, if possible. How's that?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so actually, I am going to have us vote on this to make it abundantly clear. So we're asking for what's on, yes, go ahead.
This is Brad. Can I just make sure, I'm just going to reach out to the staff and make sure that you don't have any questions and that what they're voting on will provide clear direction to you. And I'm specifically looking at Mac and Mike on this question.
So I'll speak first. I think I am clear on, especially as you're now voting on the slide that we had in the presentation on what types of policy analysis you would want brought back relative to its relationship to the OLB zoning. I think there was some comments right at the end about possibly having a full draft code that I'm not sure I understood, but that would be more for Mr. Brennan to comment on.
So thanks. So just a couple of quick comments. I think, yes, I'm clear about adding the four amendments and then the emphasis on some of the policies that exist for East Main specifically related to the affordable housing and the connectivity for pedestrians and bikes. Also about using the OLB as the basis, OLBS or South as the basis for East Main code development, which is a little bit of a change, which is a change in direction as far as the basis under which we were developing that code. But that's clear that that is where the council wants to go. And the issue about identifying the policy gaps, let's call them between the direction that's been provided in policy for East Main versus what you get in the OLBS South code. So identifying where those are and bringing those back to council for consideration and kind of reconciliation, I guess. The issue regarding drafting a complete code over the next several weeks is probably going to be a challenge for us, to be honest with you. That's a fairly significant body of work. We can absolutely incorporate the four amendments that have been described into the work that has been done. We can do the policy analysis, and we'll see how far we can get with drafting the code. But I can't, given that we're all trying to take a little bit of time off here over the next month, catch our breath. Having that prepared by the first part of September will be a challenge, but I can commit that we will probably advance that as far as we can.
Well, thank you for that. I think, you know, most importantly, we need to know whether there's conflict between what is proposed for that development and what is allowed. So.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We need a motion on this. I think we're looking for direction. And I think what Mike said is, we don't want to have expectations that we can't meet. What we're asking for is evaluation, presenting analysis, achieving alignments, and looking at these other pieces. How would we do that? And then come back, and the decision-making is a little bit later. I think it's just that we all agree on this direction. It's what we usually do on these, and we don't, I'm not sure a vote would, I think it'd complicate a little bit.
Well, I'll tell you why I want to do a vote. I feel like we have tried to say this numerous times, and we have not said it in a way that is clear nor compelling. And I would like to say it clearly and in a way that's compelling, and to me, a vote does that. So I want to be clear on what we're voting on. And I'm looking at this slide number two. And this is directing policy review, and you can read the slide. And I feel, I hear that this is what people want to do with the addition of the four points that Councilmember Barksdale outlined and with addition to the components of the East Main comp plan that includes the ped bike connectivity and the affordable housing incentives. So that's, that's what I'm proposing to staff. And Deputy Mayor, could you make a motion to that?
Certainly can, Mayor. I think I've captured the majority here, put it in slightly different phrase. But I moved that we direct staff to draft the land use code using the downtown OLB South code as a starting place, consistent with the East Main comp plan while incorporating the four points raised by the recent letters from the stakeholders, also including the bike ped connectivity and the affordable housing incentives, and then bringing it back to council as a draft in September.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That is the direction that we've given to staff. And is staff, do you have any questions on that?
No, I think, I think that was clear what you're asking for. The one, again, the challenge, we will give a deal of college straw here as far as getting a complete draft, but we will absolutely have the policy comparison done and the majority of the draft completed.
I think that'd be great. That'd be a good start for us. And thank you so much for all the work you've done on it. And thank you for indulging us with doing it this way. We really appreciate it. Okay, I think that we are done with our meeting. So a meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe. Good night.